Good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda interview for Wednesday, December 4th, 2024, relative to the appointment of Ronald Porter as a member of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1203, Resolution: Appointment of Ronald Porter as a Member of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission with the term to expire November 1, 2028.
And for the record, we are joined by myself, Councilman Kohari Mosley. Other members may join us shortly. And can Mr. Porter please join us at the table? You can sit on the side. Thank you, sir. Good morning. Always good to see you, Mr. Porter. Thank you for joining us today. Can you, you know, share some thoughts and some words about your interest in being part of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission?
On a personal level, my professional life has revolved around issues of equity and fairness. I have been a college instructor. I taught grad school, taught a course called Managing in a Multicultural Society. And the purpose of that course was really to help students create an environment within their organizations that were focused on creating the equity that reflects the communities they serve. And then I guess the most important thing is my heart is in this kind of work. I believe that there is, there's purpose and real need to assure that underrepresented populations receive opportunities to participate, particularly with public funding.
Thank you. And can you talk about why do you think, you know, your service with the Equal Opportunity Review Commission is so important?
I guess the most important thing is that I would view myself as a representative of the broad community. And I believe that the broad community has a profound interest in fairness and equity. And my experience, both as a former corporate officer and as a consultant that's practiced this type of work for over 40 years, that I have a perspective and the skill set that would allow me to be a contributing member.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. And obviously, you've had, you know, a very impressive, long, you know, storied career. Just for, you know, for my, my own curiosity, you know, you know, what, you know, continues to fuel your passion to serve after so many years?
That's a good question. The work is never done. It's not, I think one of the flaws in thinking periodically, particularly around public policy, is people think that you've reached a point and that you do something creative in terms of public policy, and it's done. I don't believe it works that way. I think that, I know that, there is a, an ongoing need to stay on top of the distribution of public dollars, to assure that equity, fairness, and really competence are recognized, and that there are voices that assure that there's an understanding that competence to perform exists across all segments of society.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, and again, given, you know, you're long and very impressive, you know, and storied career, you know, you know, based on the fact that, you know, the Pittsburgh that we live in now, you know, is much different in some ways, and maybe similar in some ways to the Pittsburgh that you grew up in, you know, understanding, you know, the equal opportunity fights that existed, you know, you grew up, you know, in, you know, in the, in the 50s, you know, and, and, and came of age in the 60s and 70s, you know, you know, how do you see, you know, Pittsburgh today? And what do you think are, you know, the, the fights for equity and equal opportunity, you know, as it relates today versus, you know, the Pittsburgh that you grew up in, in the 50s?
Well, I don't want to be overly judgmental, but it's clear to me that the issues of the 50s have not gone away today, that there are still cases where, for various and sundry reasons, organizations, individuals still have prejudice, still have kind of an exclusionary mindset when it comes to people not like them. And I believe it's incumbent upon public dollars to have the scrutiny so that when they are spent, that extraordinary efforts are enacted to assure that those dollars are spent in an equitable way. And I, I, I use the word equitable a lot because it, it really means not necessarily providing support for organizations that can't do the work. You want to be sure that organizations that can do the work are provided the access, because it's been my experience from the 50s until today, that there are times when organizations that are capable of doing the work don't get the entree to come in the door to actually perform. And that's, that I believe is very important.
Thank you. And you touched on, you know, a number of, of issues in your remarks. Is there a particular issue or particular issues that you want to address specifically, you know, as a member of the commission?
Well, yeah. One is to really be an educator, to help people understand that the efforts toward equity and fairness are in no way structured to disadvantage anyone else. Because so often, this fight for equity and fairness is viewed by some as providing a negative incentive or, or treating some people negatively. I don't think that that's the case. I think that true equity and fairness levels the playing field. And in an overarching sense, I believe that that is beneficial to our city, our community, and ultimately to the country. That I'd like Pittsburgh to be on the forefront of demonstrating that it disperses its public monies in a way that increases access for all folks who do business with the city.
Now, I truly appreciate that. And you talked about in your early remarks, how you feel that, you know, there's parts and elements of our city that haven't changed much, you know, since your early days in the 50s. Are there, you know, areas where you have seen improvement?
Yes. When I was a kid, there were no white people picking up garbage. And now it's integrated. So that's progress. It, it, it isn't always measured in terms of what blacks get, or what Hispanics get, but what we all get. And the job of rubbish collectors went to African-Americans because it was perceived back in the 50s as a dirty job. And as it became obvious that the pay for doing that job was increasing, that people were raising families, there was more public knowledge that we need people who can perform. And relegating that as only a black job was insulting in some ways. And I think that there have been other substantive changes. I'm certainly old enough to remember when there weren't African-American members on city council. And I believe that, you know, that, that represents change. I know that in city leadership, there are substantively more African-Americans and females that have been afforded opportunities that did not exist when I was growing up. On a personal note, when I was in 11th grade, I went to my counselor to talk about going to college. And my counselor, I won't name her, she said, she said, "You're a nice young Negro boy. You're smart. You should work in the steel mill because the steel mills will be here forever. And I don't know why you wouldn't want to go to college." And I viewed that as almost talking me out of going to college. So, and I, and I do think that there's a change within the educational community, some changes across the city that are positive. And certainly, things are better in many respects.
I appreciate that. And, you know, while they doubt, just have a couple more questions. You know, could you just talk a little bit more? You talked about, you know, your, again, you know, your, your wealth, you know, of experience. And, you know, can you talk just a little bit more about how, you know, your experience as an educator, working in corporate America, you know, as well as as a consultant, you know, doing community engagement work for organizations like the Pittsburgh Penguins and, you know, and so on, and how that, you know, diverse set of experience is going to be so valuable to your tenure on the commission?
I guess most importantly, that I've been, in my mind, on the front lines. Recently, when the George Floyd events occurred, the Pittsburgh Pirates retained my services to assist them in both internal and external planning. And that was a result of having had success in helping to create an environment where minority firms were engaged in building the new arena. I was intimately involved in, in, in some of that work. My, my background, I would argue, is as strong as I believe a candidate should be for this type of job. As an educator, I know the difference between affirmative action and equal employment opportunity. And those differences are major. But a lot of people don't understand that. I understand the benefits that accrue to the city when you have more diversity in your service providers and in construction and in the main things that keeps the city going. So I'm interested because at this stage of my life, I'm not able to be censured. You know, at, at, at my age, I'm able to speak without restriction. And I think that that's a freedom that, that not everybody has, quite frankly. I have the independence, the background, and the commitment to be a valuable member of this commission.
Thank you. Now, thank you for your comments today. Is there anything you want to share in closing remarks?
I'm, I'm flattered to have been asked by the mayor to join this commission. And if approved, I'm committed to doing the best job that I can for the city, for the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. I really, you know, one want to thank you for your decades of service, you know, to the city and to the communities, not only of the city, but the region as a whole, you know, and all you've given, you know, to the city as well as, you know, the wisdom that you poured into me and your tutelage, and, you know, and your support for me over the years, and your willingness to sit down, you know, and share your vast experience and, you know, and wisdom with me has been helpful. And, you know, I've, you know, I know your family very well and, you know, you know.
Well, you're, you're the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're the future. And if we don't invest in younger people now, we pay a price for it later.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And I, I appreciate your investment in me. Absolutely. And say hello to your sons as well, if you, if you see them before I do.
I probably will.
Absolutely. Well, well, having exhausted the business of this pre-agenda interview, this meeting is adjourned.
Good morning and welcome to the standing committee's meeting for Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Strasburger, cheer.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Not seeing Dr. Miller. Our next registered speaker is Amy Zace. Amy Zace with us?
I don't see her.
Okay. Our next registered speaker is Laura Toten-Kodori.
You did great on that. Yes, my name is Laura Toten-Kodori. I am a resident of the Allentown neighborhood of Pittsburgh, where I reside and have a business called Form Return. Our statement is in regards to, I believe the number was like 1268, in regards to the Food Justice Fund. We applied for the Food Justice Fund in collaboration with several other businesses. And our goal was to bring SNAP-accessible fresh food to an area where we do not have a lot of fresh food, being Allentown and Beltshever. We did not receive that funding. And we do plan to apply for the next round. We're very hopeful for that. But I would like to give some feedback on how the whole process went. Most of the information we got was through the grapevine, not actually through direct communication from the city, the governing body, the people who were actually reviewing those applications. And so we're just hoping for the opportunity to get some feedback, see what we could have improved, what maybe didn't make our application viable for the, the funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And as a reminder, anyone who speaks before council is always welcome to send written comments as well, that council members can receive by email. Our next registered speaker is Andrea Boikowicz.
Hi. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much. My name is Andrea Boikowicz. I live in central Oakland, and I'm the executive director at Oakland Planning and Development Corporation. I am commenting this morning on the so-called Enhanced Inclusionary Zoning Bill introduced by Councilperson Charland at yesterday's regular council meeting. It's not clear from my reading of this bill where the enhancements are. From what I can tell, Councilperson Charland's proposal removes any and all enforceability of the existing IZ code, making construction of affordable units something that neighborhoods are empowered to permit, but the city is not empowered to require. It also redefines eligibility and affordability to be indistinguishable from most market-rate housing, and compels the public to fund the construction of units that the market is capable of delivering without subsidy. This defeats the salient purpose of inclusionary zoning, which is to use both mandates and incentives to deliver affordable housing that the market, by definition, will not ever deliver on its own. As you know, Oakland completed its two-and-a-half-year neighborhood comprehensive planning process in 2022. The Oakland Plan included an unambiguous, clearly-stated priority to extend the inclusionary zoning overlay to all of Oakland with the sole exception of the educational, medical, and institutional areas. City Council approved that measure unanimously, and we are enormously grateful. There are three Oakland residential development projects currently navigating permitting that, if they proceed, if they proceed as planned and approved, will deliver 366 new units of housing, including 38 new affordable rental units, to North and Central Oakland. This is huge, and we couldn't be more excited. It's how IZ is supposed to work. Councilperson Charland's bill jeopardizes all of that. It would rewrite the rules midstream, introducing three things our experience has taught us that housing developers despise more than anything else: legal confusion, inconsistency, and unfairness. To avoid these and other unwanted consequences, I hope you will consider withdrawing the bill immediately.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Geraldine Smith. Geraldine Smith with us? We will now move on to next speaker, Daylon Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, City Council. There are definitely some undeniable challenges that face the city of Pittsburgh, particularly regarding the affordable housing. Because of this, it demands collaboration from our elected leaders, both from the mayor's administration and city council members, both who were chosen by the people to have a voice at the table and represent the interests of all residents of the city. It is crucial that both work together to craft solutions that prioritize the needs of Pittsburgh's working families and ensure our city's continued growth. The legislation introduced by Councilman Bob Charland, which may differ from the mayor's administration's proposals, highlights the need for cooperation rather than division. Minor disagreements, especially when proposals are still in the early stages, should not derail the important work of addressing the housing crisis that faces the city of Pittsburgh, which all are passionate about addressing directly. I urge all parties to focus on presenting and supporting legislation that benefits all residents of the city, particularly those who are most impacted by rising housing costs. Now is the time to rise above our differences and stand united for common good. The city faces trials that demand shared resolve from our elected leaders. Your unwavering commitment to progress, your collective approach to serve all people. The challenges ahead are great, but so is too the power of unity when leaders put aside discord and work together for a brighter future. Let us remember that government is at its best when it is clear in purpose and steadfast in action. I urge all who has a seat at the table, whether it be on the mayor's administration side or city council, to focus on what truly matters, and that is getting the work done for the city of Pittsburgh for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Tim Stevens.
Morning, Council. I'm not feeling too great today, but I wanted to come down because housing is a big deal. I'm proud that I have a home, proud that I have a home that increases in value, so I can use my home equity. I think all of you know the importance of having a home. We need to be able to find ways of expanding, not expanding, but expanding the opportunity for people to have homes. You all agree with that? And we're coming upon the Christmas season, coming upon a new year. I'm asking that council, and the mayor, and his administration, that you all find some time to sit down outside of the cameras and go through your differences. Because one of the major differences I have a problem with, by the way, with your, your legislation, it moves from 20 to 35, 35 years down to 20 in affordable housing commitments. That's huge. As an advocate for, as chair of Black Political Empowerment Project, BEPAP, we want to extend the ability for, when we have this new housing developments, that people have an opportunity to be able to still be in those developments as far out as possible, not just for a few years. I'd like to see it to be eternally. People can stay. One of my BEPAPers years ago, she's dead now, couldn't stay in Crawford Square. And she was working full-time. So this issue is, is huge of housing, affordable housing, housing for people with moderate incomes. Moderate incomes aren't what they used to be. So if you can sit with the mayor and the mayor can sit with you, find ways of making this stuff work. It's in our interest as a city. And let me say this. Imposing mandates. There was a time, black people could not sit beside white people in the bathroom. It required legal action. Some people don't want black people or poor people in their neighborhood. So this is reality. Thank you very much. This is what we need to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. Thank you. There be no further registered speakers. We will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. It's a lot. Thank you, Tim, for your comments. The living wage for Pittsburgh is $21.13 an hour. Really? Everybody's not making that. They're starting at 13, 14, 17 an hour. That's not enough to live in this city. To be able to afford to live in this city, the minimum wage says $21.13 an hour. I just had to bring that point up. Let me pray. Lord, no matter how many times I'm attacked spiritually with voodoo death spells and rituals to make me sick, by your stripes, I'm healed. I command a wall of fire to protect me while I sleep, and I command protection over all my chakras. How did I get here? We don't know. Somebody does, though. I promise you, somebody knows how I got here. I was sold for money by my real family. Wonder for how much? Like, wow. I'm worth more dead than I am alive. Imagine that. But I'm still here, very much alive. Lavelle, let's talk about it. Mosley, this proverb is for you. Proverbs 18:9 says, "One who is slack in his work is a brother to one who destroys." That one's for you. Again, this one is for you. Proverbs 2130 says, "There is no wisdom, no insight, no plan that can succeed against the Lord." You took the oath with God for your position, yet you come in here and speak for an hour and a half on your 2025 budget plan, which is what, $657 million? I promise you, the Lord has popcorn in his hand, and he's laughing, saying, "Where you gonna get it? How? What you gonna do for it? What you gonna do for it? Really?" I already got two bags, I promise you. President Trump, go to NSA and the CIA to see the madness and lack of self-control out of jealousy using energy weapons. There's Ethiopian and There's Ethiopian and East African people from the NSA who are raining terror on pretty women out of jealousy. Like, really? It's crazy. These people have jobs in the NSA. They come to our country and then they torment us. Please look into that. A correction on my, the salary that you guys make, $86,970, which is a 7% increase from last year, not a 3% increase. I'm gonna continue to pray for y'all to have mercy on the souls of the homeless out here in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, up at the top of Bedford. That's the senior citizens high-rise. I don't know whether the news reporter is here from WESA, the radio station. I'm not sure what her name is, but I want the people to understand that WESA, I listen to it every day, and there's a lot of information and news, because we die for lack of knowledge. And this station really brings, what I say is, it talks about from all sides, not just one side. They may say that so-and-so says this, but then this person says that. So they do show all sides, and that's what I feel that you just need to know. You need to know what's happening in the community where I live, because you make the decisions whether we live or die. Now, people say, they said, "Yvonne, you can keep on going talking about live or die." When Anton got shot, you saw him running, and he turns his head, and the cop shoots and kills him. You know why? Because they said, "If he felt, if the cop felt threatened," that's what Jins made this rule, "if you feel threatened." So Anton, looking back at him, he died. When I seen it, I screamed. It was a massacre. You must understand that you might not agree with me, because you don't live in my neighborhood. You don't know what we're going through. You don't know, and especially Ms. Gross. I talk bad about her because of what she did, not as a person. I don't know her as a person, but I know when she said that her and Bill Perdido made sure that the police, they're gonna get the new police chief, and he had promised they would come to every neighborhood, and she said, "Very, so many neighborhoods. Me and Bill decided that we would put Lawrenceville with the hill." Now, I asked Mr. Lavelle, "How many black people were there? Do you understand? We had to take two buses to get there." And yes, Lawrenceville take one to get here. No, they could have had it here at the city council. Do you understand? And just like this, when you have holidays, Dr. Miller says, like, "I also, Tuesday, I don't do nothing but Tuesday, I come down here." Dr. Miller, the same thing. Now, for the holiday, you just made it so you took Monday off. He's out of town sometime. We come down, a lot of people don't. I tell them to come, because you need to know, you need to hear what I got to say, even if you don't want to hear it. You need to, because I have went through a lot through this city, and I have seen what they have done to our black young people. You make them as enemies. You make them. They say, even if you go to court, black people will vote harder against the young kids than what the white. And I'll use this as an example. Anytime, my time is almost up, but please listen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we will move on to our standing committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and we have one supplemental paper, Bill 1270.
Bill 1270, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capitol Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Sports Facilities by $100,000 and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $100,000."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Yes. Is anybody here to speak to this? I just want to verify something, if anybody's here to speak to. So maybe somebody at the table could answer. Is this us taking money from the facility usage tax and transferring it? A tax that, really, I feel we shouldn't be collecting, but... Yeah. Peter, can you answer this?
Peter McDevitt, City Council Budget Director. I believe this is... No, so it's not the facility use fee. This is old pay-go money from 2023. This would have been worked through with the District Two office. This is moving money that was for the Westwood Field concession stands to the Westwood Playground renovations.
So this is not the facility's use?
No, this is just old pay-go money.
Reducing sport facilities. Okay. All right. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1270, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 1236.
Bill 1236, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Maria A. Pendro Thompson and Her Attorney, Rabner Law Offices PC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in the Amount of $9,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1236, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. 1237.
Bill 1237, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Cassandra Hosky and Her Attorney, Rabner Law Offices PC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $75,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 1237, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1238.
Bill 1238, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Tawad Abraham and Their Attorneys, Kontos, Menjarn, Killian, and Hassan, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1238, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1239.
Bill 1239, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kush T. Patel and His Attorneys, Wimmer and Tyler Rico, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $250,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1239, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1240.
Bill 1240, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Iron City Ventures LLC for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1240, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1241.
Bill 1241, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Sarah Pratt and Her Attorneys, HKM Employment Attorneys, LLP, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $130,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1241, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1242.
Bill 1242, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gordon M. Brown and His Attorneys, Rabner Law Offices PC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1242, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1243.
Bill 1243, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Frost Brown Todd LLC for Legal Services in Connection with the Sports Facility Usage Fee Tax Dispute for an Amount Not to Exceed $27,236 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1243, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1244.
Bill 1244, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Joanna Abuzar for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1244, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1245.
Bill 1245, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through Q. 4331 Dakota Street, District 6; 251 Brereton Street, District 7; 0 Brereton Street, District 7; 5369 Warble Street, District 9; 5217 Natrona Way, District 7; 521 Kendall Street, District 7; 7053 Chaucer Street, District 9; 0 Breisland Street, District 9; 0 Millbridge Street, District 3; 2929 Zephyr Avenue, District 2; 0 Iten Street, District 1; 239 East Jefferson Street, District 6; 1440 Sandusky Street, District 6; 0 Sunset Avenue, District 1; and 1637 Maryland Street, District 5.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1245, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1246.
Bill 1246, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, Acceptance of Gifts to the City, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to accept a donation from Veronis of Professional Services to conduct an assessment of data security risk to the City of Pittsburgh at an estimated market value of $40,000, and further to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Veronis for such professional services at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1246, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1247.
Bill 1247, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Bloomberg Philanthropies for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Initiative in the Amount Not to Exceed $120,000 for the City's Innovation Team Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1247, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Do I have a motion on invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second. I do have a couple of notes from our Assistant Council Budget Director. There are multiple invoices to the new Pittsburgh Courier from the Department of Finance totaling over $5,000. These are advertisements for different treasure sales and do not require a waiver of our rules. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Invoices are approved. It moves us on to interdepartmental transfers. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of interdepartmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Interdepartmental transfers are approved. That moves us on to P cards. Do I have a motion on P cards?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I do have a note for P cards, and that is, there are three PayPal charges listed on this week's report. One is for OMB to pay for membership dues to the PA Public Purchasing Association. Two others are for PLI, for the International Association of Electrical Inspectors. Any further discussion on P cards? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Madam Chair, point of order. May I revisit the Finance Bill 1245? I just got a message from my staff that's the treasure sale properties. Do I have a motion to reconsider, or do you want me to wait until the end of the meeting?
I'm fine with a motion to reconsider.
Mind if I, motion to reconsider Bill 1245?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There are a bunch of properties here. There are three in District 7, but two of them are in a steep landslide prone. You'll recognize the name of the street, Brereton, which just collapsed onto the East Busway last week. And so I'd like to motion to delete 251 Brereton Street and 0 Brereton Street. And I may indulge, we're doing a little more research on the third property, which is not in Polish Hill, it's in Lawrenceville. So if, with your indulgence, we're gonna do more looking into that one. There's another one on Kendall Street, actually, fourth. We'll do more looking into those two before Tuesday. But if you wouldn't mind, a motion to delete 251 Brereton and 0 Brereton.
We have a motion to delete 251 Brereton and 0 Brereton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of amending Bill 1245 with the previously discussed voice amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Bill is amended. Motion to approve Bill 1245 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Amended Bill 1245 receives affirmative recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, now we have moved on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill 1226, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into agreement or agreements with a Step Up Veterinary, Inc., for professional licensed veterinary services to the City's Department of Public Safety Bureau of Animal Care and Control at an overall cost to the city not to exceed $292,390 and 48 cents over four years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1226, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 1271, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements or the use of existing agreements with the Pittsburgh Public Schools for the Purpose of Renovating the Playground on PPS-owned property known as Westwood Park, where Westwood Precase School resides, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1271, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 1249.
Bill 1249, Resolution Providing for an Amended Agreement or Agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers, Inc., for costs associated with the CBD Signals Phase 4 project, providing for payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $633,887.46, an increase of $57,999.82 from the previously passed authorization.
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1249, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1251.
Bill 1251, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of $1 million from the Department of Public Works Bureau of Facilities to the Department of Public Works Bureau Administration to pay for utility expenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1251, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlin.
Bill 1223, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement that will amend Resolution 97 of 2024, which authorize a professional services contract between the City of Pittsburgh and UPMC Benefit Management Services, Inc., doing business as work partners, EAP Life Solutions for services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Employee Assistance Program by extending the contract for one year, increasing the approved amount by $49,500 for a new total cost not to exceed... cost not to exceed ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twelve twenty-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve twenty-four.
Bill twelve twenty-four, resolution amending Resolution ninety-five of two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and the director of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement with P and A Group for services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act program by adding one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and extending the contract for three years for a new total not to exceed amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the course of four years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twelve twenty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill twelve twenty-five.
Bill twelve twenty-five, resolution providing for a professional agreement with Lewis and Nishrauer Consulting to provide strategic planning and training to the commission over one year, total cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twelve twenty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Defer paper, Bill eight nineteen, ordering to amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning code, Article One, Introduction and Establishment, Section nine oh two oh three, zoning map to rezone parcels eighty-three J three hundred, eighty-three K one oh four, and eighty-three K one oh two from R two M, two-unit residential moderate density, to R M V H, multi-unit residential very high density, in parcels eighty-three J three oh one, eighty-three K forty-eight, eighty-three K sixty, and a portion of eighty-three K sixty-one from R M M, multi-unit residential moderate density, so R M V H, multi-unit residential very high density in the East Liberty neighborhood.
Motion to approve.
Second brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, this is a zoning change in the East Liberty community, which has gotten a lot of attention from community members and a lot of community members in support, a lot of community members in opposition to the original plan for this apartment building. I was able to sit down with the developer, you know, recently, and they're going to scale back the size of this development by about a quarter. And so there'll be a number of variances that they will not be seeking, you know, after this moves forward. And one of the, one of the major pieces of feedback that I got from the community, while some folks were not in support of it, they were willing to find a compromise as far as the size and scale, which was originally was two hundred and sixty-four units, which is going to be significantly smaller than that. And so I'm comfortable moving this forward for a number of reasons. One, you know, I definitely want to remove the blight that this parcel, you know, has brought to the East Liberty community, but understanding the sensitivity that the community had, I really, you know, applaud the developer for being willing to sit down with me, you know, and negotiate a compromise, a smaller development, but also maintain, you know, their commitment to twenty-five percent affordability at fifty percent A M I on this site. So I just wanted, you know, to share that for those in the public, and looking forward to continue to work with the Village Collaborative as well as Mona to ensure that, you know, this development, you know, is a good partner for the community. And I know there's a lot of, you know, hard feelings, but I think we have an opportunity to move forward, you know, in a positive way, you know, and bring some needed housing to the community as well as, you know, maintain our commitment to bringing affordable housing back to East Liberty.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilman Mosley, given that this is your district, is this, and given what you just said, is the intention to continue to move forward with this bill as written?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of Bill eight nineteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill, new papers, Bill twelve fifty-two.
Bill twelve fifty-two, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of EcoTone in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars for composting services at the Homewood Healthy Active Living Center in fulfillment of the Soil Mill Pittsburgh pilot, a component of the USDA grant.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Discussion, second. Councilman Wilson.
Do we have anyone that can discuss the bill? Come to the table.
Good morning.
Say your name.
I'm Flor Marion. I'm the Assistant Director for Sustainability and Residence in City Planning.
Great. If you could give council an overview of the bill.
Yes, so we, we had a USDA grant for a composting pilot that's wrapped up in September. And part of that grant, we worked with EcoTone, which is a success story of Pittsburgh. It's a startup that started at C M U. They went in the P G H lab as one of the startup part of the program, and we had a very successful collaboration with them. So when we had the funding from USDA for the project, they were the only qualifying composter locally because they had the permits to do the composting on site. So we decided to work with them. And we're going to leverage the P G H lab contract we had with them. And then P G H lab is another success story. We changed the model where the first few years, the participants were working with us with no stipend, and now we have a new model with a stipend. So because of these contracts change, we could not leverage the existing contract to work with them. And so we've, they've done the work for us, but we didn't have the right contract set up to be able to pay them. So this is really just paperwork to be able to use the USDA grant funding to pay the work they've done for us already.
Okay. Every time I see the word pilot, I'm just wondering what this could lead to?
So this was really successful. They were specifically located in Homewood. We had their composter on site. They provided education for the resident. They all learned how to compost. They were really, there was a little bit of apprehension at the beginning, but with the education, the resident really loved the program and were actually a little bit sad when the pilot finished. So this was really successful. They worked with us even though we didn't pay the invoice by the way. The resident were really happy with it. And that's part of the success is why we have another composting grant with the US Conference of Mayor. And we are right now looking to start another, another phase of this composting program. This was a foundation. We're starting another step next year, and hopefully we can get to a model where we have a lasting composting program that works for Pittsburgh.
So this is composting, where at the Healthily Active Living Center, they were taking it and composting it on site?
Yes. They have a composting system that's lots of chemistry happening in it. It's contained in a container. They drop the container on site, and you can just dump your composting into the container, and then there's a process happening with some hot, hot bean in there, and you get a fluid called a soil sauce, that's a branding, and you can use it as a fertilizer. And so they sell it to the public. They also give it as a discount to the people that participate in their EcoTone program. And they have several other sites in the city, not with us. This was the only one we did with them. But this one toward the airport, there's another one. They were working with restaurants. I think there's four sites in Pittsburgh, and they're also starting to manufacture the units that they're selling around the U S.
So I'm just trying to understand, is this a program that could grow with composting on site or pick up?
It could, it could be both. We could drop more container at different cities' facilities to have others, rec center, senior center, or even some of our buildings have a container on site and compost their own facilities for them. You guys are used to that.
No, not really.
Sorry. And, but we could also offer a program where maybe residents participate and come to the site and drop off. But the container itself is doing the composting. So depending where we put it, if you put it next to where the waste is produced and it's on site, if you put it on the side that's at a distance, maybe we would have to be driving the waste to the site.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming to the table.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Councilperson Charlin, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Yes. So, you know, I'm excited about opportunities to work on composting. I do want to know, is this going to, you know, as we're continuing, is this going to go out for bid?
Yes.
Or are we just going to waive competitive process here?
We love working with them, but this was a pilot. We just want to pay the work they did for us in the past, but any future composting effort, we have a public, it will not be this good. This is really, we have received the grant. We have, things have changed internally, so we need a new system to approve the payment of the work that has been done. So this really needs to happen now because the grant is, the grant finished in September, so we have, we are wrapping up the paperwork, so we want to be able to invoice that expenses that we occurred to the USDA.
Sure.
So, but, and we are currently working with another grant where we're going to have a request for qualification for several composter. And EcoTone may answer and may, I don't know what's going to happen here, but there's going to be open. They're not all exclusive composter contract. We're starting fresh for the composting effort.
We haven't seen that legislation yet.
It's still in process.
When, when will that RFQ go out? What, what, can you, I don't need a day, but if you give me like a summer.
I'm hoping Q one, not earlier than that. The draft is ready, so we just need to have some other internal approval, but we have a draft, R F Q, that we're working on with the team right now.
Okay. Well, I'm excited to see that. And this is something that, you know, means a lot to folks in my district, so I, I really want to make sure we're, we're open, transparent, and, you know, collecting the best bids there. So, thank you.
Definitely. We, we know Pittsburgh loves composting, and we appreciate that as a sustainability team, so we will continue to work with all of you to make sure we can bring composting to Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So we just can't have composting at the table without doing like a little cheering. So we're just like, yes, we are glad to have this much. We were glad to get the first grant. Council knows, and council has supported more investments in composting, and I'm really happy to see that. You know, I've, I always tell the stories, I'm going to just tell it very quickly. It was eleven years now, I think, ago that I visited a friend on the West Coast, and they had curbside weekly compost pickup in like beautiful municipal bins. And there was also garbage pickup, but you didn't put your food waste in the garbage can because it only got picked up every two weeks. And so you did not put your stinky like dinner plate, scrape it into the garbage can. You only scraped it into the compost thing, which was as big, and that was the weekly curbside pickup. And as always, it can reduce our tonnage in half, which means it reduces the vehicle miles traveled of the fleet of the waste haulers in half, and that was fuel costs in half, and frees up workforce. And so, but it takes space, and it takes, I think, as Councilman Charlin pointed out, and we were sidebar-ing a bit, and I am excited to pursue that we need to figure out kind of what are the physical assets that are needed, and also what are the capacities in the entrepreneurial system in the city, as well as kind of the technicalities of like what, you know, it's awareness raising. Like we had to do with recycling decades ago, like what can you compost, and what can you not compost, and what kinds of systems, et cetera. So, thank you for this one. Well, I'm sure, look, I don't know that you have an official report out from this grant, but I'm sure council would be happy to get that as well, if you want to send it along to council.
Yeah, we.
And then we can kind of wrap our minds around what is, you know, what are the next logical steps.
Yes, we, we just, so the grant officially finished September thirtieth. We're wrapping up the invoices and the reporting. I have seen one of the draft. It's really interesting. So as soon as we have a final draft, we're eager to share with the public, and we really appreciate the support from the resident and council on composting.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. I just want you to explain one more time about the process for the RFQ, or the R F P. Pardon me?
We, we.
Go ahead.
So.
That was okay. I wanted to hear. Well, first of all, let me just say, the only time I ever hear about composting is from Councilwoman Gross, so it's good to see somebody on the other side of the table talking about it now. So, I don't, I'm sorry.
Always happy to be here for composting, so happy to come anytime, at the table or in your office. I'm an avid composter myself, so.
She likes talking trash, not me.
So, we, so we have received another grant from the US Conference of Mayor to help us take the composting to the next level. Right now, we were wiping up the Soil Mill grant that we have. We didn't want too much overlap to avoid even more confusion. We have started working on the R F P draft, so there is something in Open Gov right now that we're working with the procurement team. That will go out probably not this year, because it's already December, but I'm hoping during Q one.
So I just want to make sure, so it's going out?
Yes.
You're issuing the contract?
No, we're issuing the R F P to get the answers from the many composter that want to participate.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not doing what we just did with the Homewood Community Sports Contract, and we're saying it's okay now, but we didn't do it for the Homewood Community Sports Contract. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So I'll abstain today, and then get some more clarity. So I feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twelve fifty-two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Bill twelve sixty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with four organizations to support large-scale investments in Pittsburgh's food system as part of the Food Justice Initiatives, American Rescue Plan Act allocation at a total cost not to exceed one million, one hundred thousand dollars over one, two years.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with discussion.
With discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. Could we have everyone come to the table? Gavin, the last time I saw you, we were at, doing the tour of my district.
Yeah, it was a long one.
Yeah.
Yeah, hi, Gabby McMorland, Food Justice Fund Coordinator.
Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. So we have a lot of questions about the distribution of the funds, the process. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues first, and I'll come, I'll speak last, but I know others have a lot of.
Sure.
Concerns. But thank you all for your work on this. I know this has been, anytime you do a new initiative, it's always a challenge getting it off the ground.
Thank you. I know Council, Councilman Coghill had a question, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, welcome Catherine and Gabby. Gabby, I want to thank you for getting back to me promptly yesterday. That was very important to me to get the information I was seeking. As you know, and I just want to kind of run through our conversation yesterday. One of my constituents, Jamie Christian, was very disappointed she didn't, was not awarded one of these grants. What do we call them, grants?
Sorry, go ahead.
These are actually contracts for services to, these are contracts to provide services to city residents, or sort of, in some ways, and I think this might be at the root of some people's confusion and distress, understandable distress, is that, you know, the city contracting process really works much differently and has some different parameters and goals than what you might see from something like a foundation like the Heinz Endowments.
And I'll just say, it's, so it's not a grant program, but the tier one funding that is coming forward is a grant program.
Director, please introduce yourself.
Oh, I, oh, sorry. Catherine Vargas, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Again.
Okay, so, the way I understood it from our conversation yesterday, tier two, million and a half of this pot, a million and a half dollars has been allocated under contract. It doesn't matter what verbiage you want to use.
Yes, that's what the bill is for today, is for tier two, but tier one is, is not, and that's the portion of the funds that is a grant program for grassroots agencies to receive up to seventy-five thousand dollars worth of funding for various projects. And that is forthcoming.
That's right. And in tier two, it was, the cap was at eighty-seven thousand, or no, it was more, I mean, what was the cap there?
So, I'm just going to say the whole thing as a summary. So there's, there is, when council allocated the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Food Justice Fund, it all needs to be obligated, which is this federal regulation where that just means we have to have it all contracted before the end of this year. And one and a half million dollars, council decided should be used for grants up to seventy-five thousand dollars. And. And that is obligated, the money's safe, the federal government's not going to take it back. And that million and a half, that was obligated when council approved the contract with New Sun Rising back in the end of the summer. And those applications aren't open yet, but they will be soon. And so everyone in the public should stay tuned to get ready to apply. Then what we're discussing today is tier two. These were contracts for the legislation that council passed in 2023, said that the awarded amount for each contract was to be between 75,000 and half a million dollars. And the funds are not obligated yet because, well, because the contracts are still awaiting discussion and approval by council. And if you do approve them, they'll be obligated. And if you don't, then we will have reached the end of the year and the clock will have run out.
But I think the significant difference, and to answer your question, Councilman, is that the tier two is meant to be larger scale investments up to half a million dollars. That was the cap on, on those investments. And the tier two funding was also meant to be money that the city would directly provide to an agency to provide a service to city residents on behalf of the city. So this would be something, so different than a grant program. One thing that I can say, as we're not able to discuss independent projects globally, we did have a number of projects that had portions of the, of the project that are ARPA eligible. And at the close of this process, we plan to go back to every vendor who applied and make sure that they are aware that for the ARPA eligible portion of their project, that tier one is a viable opportunity to access those funds and as that will be open to anyone to apply.
Okay. And that made sense to me, Gabby, when we spoke yesterday, that makes complete sense. But the people who applied for tier two.
Yes.
Who were denied or not considered was because they didn't meet the federal guidelines as to what, how we can allocate that money, correct?
So it was two things. We did receive close to 30 applications for a very small portion of funds. And so we had to kind of weigh two things in this process. The typical process of scoring and looking at the impact of the project, the merit of the projects. We were able to have that process as you would for any bid process. And then at the same time, we had to crosswalk that with ARPA eligibility. And so working back and forth with our, you know, legal team and OMB to, you know, make those determinations around ARPA eligibility, that's not something that Gabby and I would do. We had to weigh both of those things. So what we were able to, the result of that has been the projects that are moved forward that are the ones that we know for a fact meet ARPA eligibility in full. And I will say, every project had to make some sort of tweak in the process. So we went back and forth with a lot of vendors because everybody was, is, was under consideration. And for some projects, ARPA eligibility, portions of their projects certainly met ARPA eligibility, which is why we plan to go back to every vendor to make sure that they're aware of that. And, you know, what I hope that is representative in this particular, I would say, package of organizations is the fact that, you know, you can see how it's different ways of getting at the food system. There's urban ag in there. There's direct support to residents. There's support to systems like local pantry systems that have had higher demand than you typically see. And there's investment in a specific healthy food priority area to test something new and to build something in a community that has been underserved. So what we feel has been able to happen with this particular process is that we know that ARPA eligibility is met and we are looking at the food system in different ways. That's not to say that the tier one opportunity, which will go, you know, which is going to be announced, you know, we wanted to wrap this up. And that's the next project that Gabriel will be putting out there. We have a lot of vendors who did apply here that we're going to go back and give everybody feedback on their applications and make sure that they're aware about.
Yeah. And Gabby and I spoke today, yesterday, and I'm really happy that you're going to have those conversations. Make sure their applications are suitable so they can be funded.
And that's actually part of the technical assistance part that we, that so now moving forward applicants.
But there was no technical assistance on the first round.
For the first, yeah, because it wasn't the grant.
That's why we're now having technical assistance.
Yeah, we're actually not allowed to, we can only do that, as with all RFPs and the city's bid process, we can, we just do that kind of webinar info session when the RFP comes out. And then we have like a, kind of like a frequently asked questions page that any bidder can submit a question. A lot of people did. And then the answer gets posted publicly. But it's, it's a very structured system and it makes it, it's a little hard to be mutually collaborative with the vendors through that system. And we also did confirm yesterday, it might've been after I talked to you, I don't remember, that we, we can't actually follow up with the non-awarded vendors and have discussions or feedback until after these contracts are executed. We have to complete this process before we're allowed to just go, discuss the process with the other people.
Tier two gave a million and a half dollars to four organizations. I will tell you, when I supported this, which I did, I was under the impression it was going to go to all the local people who came down and spoke. I don't recall Food Bank being here. I don't recall the people you awarded even being here advocating for this. I didn't know we were going to put a large or half of the pot into bigger organizations like that.
So we actually, so just going back to the original plan that was passed by council in about 2023, there were two different pots.
I have a sidebar, sorry.
Okay. No, yeah. So there were two different pots of funds. One was specifically for a grant program for grassroots organizations where we would also, we provide the technical assistance for that, where it can operate like a grant program. And we, you know, would work with an organization that would help us make sure that we can operate it as such. The second half were for larger dollar investments into the Pittsburgh food system. All parts of the food system, whatever parts, you know, those are, which would be direct grants from the city to organizations with the expectation that the cap on those would be up to $500,000. So the expectation for the second half was that it wasn't going to be a high number of grants. It was going to be higher dollar amounts to a smaller pool of organizations. And, you know, in both cases, the goal of the Food Justice Fund is to impact the food system here in our city in positive ways. You know, the grassroots organization tier one opportunity is going to be an ability to test ideas with organizations of all sizes. Organizations of all sizes were also able to apply for this particular service agreement with the city. And, you know, I would say the difference there being that because it's a direct contract with the city, you know, we had to work with the law department and OMB on making sure that the test around ARPA eligibility could pass for any, any grant that would move forward. And we went back and forth on, like, we, on a lot of these, like, we, we had active, and we're not allowed to talk to the vendor, but through procurement, we had active back and forth, question and answer, wanting to make sure that we could do our best to make sure that everything was ARPA eligible. So that, you know, at the end of the day, I think the goal is, we also are confident in the ability to, a year from now, be, you know, audited and that all of these will meet the ARPA requirements. And so that was our, probably the thing, the work that we had to do on our end was communicate that stuff to, to OMB and the law department and get their way in on our eligibility.
I understand. And Gabby did a good job at explaining to me yesterday, I will tell you. But who makes the decision? Is there a committee of two, three people? Who makes the decision as to who to, where this money goes?
Yes. So there's a committee of three folks.
Whom are?
Myself, Gabby, and then Darius, who is on the Food Justice Fund Committee with us. They have to be folks who worked at the, who work at the city. So we were the three folks who.
And the second round will be starting when?
The second round will start either right before Christmas or right after New Year's. It depends on one of the delays in opening the applications for, well, there's only two delays. The two factors delaying the opening of applications for the grants up to 75,000 is, first, it actually took a lot of capacity, including our time with the law department and OMB and Meyer Dussel to work through this stack of 29 proposals requesting more than $7 million. And they're all very multifaceted proposals. And ARPA is not a simple checklist. It is sort of a series of formulas and it takes a while to work through what might be possible. So that took longer than we thought. And also.
So Gabby, when's it gonna, when's it gonna?
The second thing, so, oh, sorry. The beginning of my answer was that it would either be near the end of December or the beginning of January. And the second reason for that is because.
These have to be approved first, is what you said, right?
Basically, we just didn't have, we don't have capacity to finish the eligibility guidelines with clarity. And we, I do not want to open the small grant applications without being able to offer really clear guidance to community groups about what they can and cannot receive funding for. Because unlike the kind of programmatic criteria that we would see from like, you know, a foundation where they say, we've determined that strategically, we want to invest in this kind of thing, urban farming or education or what have you. We have to make sure that our programmatic goals sort of fit with the ARPA requirements. And so in doing that, it's not intuitive to applicants. And we want to make sure, we don't want people to waste their time. We don't want them to ask for things that doesn't make sense. And so we have to make sure that like, in order to properly serve our small community groups, we need to have like really clear guidance. And we're very close, but that's why it's not ready yet.
Well, I'm glad you're going to help them through the next step. That's, that's very important. We don't want them to be rejected for their paperwork again. So I'll just cut to the chase with you, okay? There's one group in my district, and it's Jamie Christian's group, who I feel was worthy and needed this support. She was counting on us. She was down here, she was the main lobbyist for this, right? She was one of the main reasons why I supported it, I will tell you. I believe in what she does. She's probably prematurely budgeted for it and that's not our fault. But I expect her to get the $75,000 grant next time around. I do.
And one thing I do want to make some clarity on real quickly is just that the second portion of this project, the tier one, there is a larger committee, we do have the Food Justice Committee, that will also be reading and scoring these that are also made up of folks who are in this work. So because it's more of a grant process, it's able to be reviewed as such, which I think is actually, you know, it's a positive thing because it's, so I wanted there to be clarity that moving forward, that the grants, the grant reviews involve also a broad committee that are part of that, that are also in the plan.
Bigger committee than the three of you then?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because they're two very different processes legally.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear.
Procurement really structured.
Not have that clear.
You heard my input.
Yes.
That's my input from my council district. We have a million and a half dollars to distribute still.
Yes, we do.
Absolutely.
I'm hoping some of that comes to District Four. Well, Food Bank's citywide, I mean, you know, I'm talking about individual. This is the reason why I supported this. It really is. I thought we were going to help the, the people who are helping other people grow.
Yeah. And I, you know, just candidly, you do have healthy food priority areas in your district, areas that could absolutely benefit from food investments. So, you know, we expect those to be citywide.
And I'm not diminishing the work of the Food Bank and others, okay? I know they do great work, but they also get major money from major foundations. And I also know that. I feel like we're putting a little bit into a big pot. I'd rather put a lot into a smaller pot, meaning smaller organizations. That's the way I understood it to be. I know we just picked four. You didn't have to just pick four for the million and a half. You could have picked 10 if you wanted to and split it evenly, correct? Had they met their qualifications or guidelines that you were looking for.
One, yeah, we actually thought about that. One challenge, there's a couple of challenges with doing that through the RFP process. So if somebody submits, let's say someone submits an idea for a, you know, $400,000 project, you can start taking pieces out so that you can spread the money out. But it's, you know, you imagine taking pieces out of a house of cards or a log cabin or a car. Like at some point, it's not a functioning car anymore. So it's the same issue with proposals when they come in, because we're not able to just sort of freely, we can't ask people to come up with a totally new proposal. We can just sort of remove parts or maybe add an income verification requirement or something like that. And then similarly, with the, the thing that I'm excited though about, about what you just said is that with, and this is for every council office and district, when we very soon open the applications for the small grants, the more applications that come in from your district, the more likely it is that projects in your district will be funded. And we definitely need your help with outreach.
And I did want to add one note because we mentioned the Food Bank and since they are on this list, I did want to say that some of the back and forth that we've had around not just ARPA eligibility, but the spirit of this particular award, I think an example of that is that we've talked to the Food Bank about making sure that we get reporting back on how this spreads across council districts and particularly what communities are supported by this investment. And they are not including any admin fee of any sort. It is 100% of the dollars going out are going directly to local food banks.
In tier one.
For this one. Yeah, for this, for this today. Yeah. So that I can speak to because it is part of their plan. But that is the kind of back and forth that we had to have with organizations to make sure. So just to say that it's not a grant going to the Food Bank to support the Food Bank's existence and it's specifically to support the fund that they have specifically for local food pantries. And they need to report back to us how that is spread out across council districts so that we can come back and talk about that.
I don't want to be labor. You know, we talked yesterday. I just kind of wanted to get it out in the open. I do wish there was more of a communication between the folks who did apply for tier two when they were denied and they weren't really given the explanation until they saw it.
Absolutely. And legally, we're not allowed to talk to them directly. It goes through a procurement officer. But as soon as this is closed, we are going to contact every vendor because we have a lot of really great organizations that we want to be able to follow up with and talk about the next opportunity that will be moving, that will be presented. Absolutely.
So legally, because this is still open, you couldn't tell them why.
Not yet.
That's correct. Yeah. Which, you know, I got to say, like, just as a person.
It's hard.
It's hard. So, you know, so when, but we, we're definitely going to do that. These are important relationships and these are, you know, this isn't just like getting bids from national level IT consultants or McKinsey or something, right? These are community groups that are doing real work in communities. And so, you know, we want to follow up, but we have to wait until we are allowed to, which is very soon, but not yet.
Okay, good enough. You promised me, not you, Director Gabby, you would meet with my constituent.
Oh, yeah.
Coach her through, once you're able to, legally able to, to make sure she has the correct verbiage in there so she's not tossed out like she was this round. Right. Okay. That's it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Charlin.
Thank you. So I appreciate you being here today. I, similar to Councilman Coghill, have a project in my district that applied that in a, in a food apartheid area that truly, when I heard about it, almost brought me to tears in terms of the collaboration that would have been involved from, from growing food all the way to providing it to those in most need and all the components that are involved. And, you know, not just that we are going to do one portion of this, but that we are going to do the whole thing here in the Hilltop and, and really grow our own and take care of our own there with, you know, a variety of different entities that were all involved, really creating a stream, you know, a pipeline, I should say, not a streamline, of all people that are currently doing this work. And it would be expanding a portion of their capacity that therefore can create this, this pipeline. And when we found out that they were not just denied, but didn't know that they were denied. And frankly, they, you know, there were, I believe there was an original line of rejections that, that you gave out right away when people didn't meet criteria. Am I correct with that? No?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay. That's good, good to know. That was the understanding was that some people that applied did not receive.
And just for clarity, there were, there was like a non-city project. And just for clarity, there were, there was like a non-city project, like things that didn't meet the requirement for being supported by the city, got an initial. There were a couple of like ones that right away, you know, was in Penn Hills, we can't support that. So those kinds of ones were deemed like right away. So there was like that.
Like a, like a very superficial screening.
Oh, no, sorry, that's true. There were, out of 29 proposals, there were two that were actually proposing to do a project, which honestly sounded like worthwhile projects, but were totally outside of the city, serving residents totally outside of the-
So that happened.
It was just sort of, I think, we, so procurement, I, I actually don't know what communication they received, but they were excluded right away, because it was like, well, this is not even a thing within the city. This is unrelated to the city. And so that was excluded. After that, that left 27 proposals, including the one you're talking about, which was an awesome idea. And-
And I think-
All of those, sorry.
Go ahead.
All of those, what I learned, is that vendors receive through OpenGov a sort of automated notification that says, like, an award has been issued for RFP number, what have you. And then, and it, it's, you might even miss it, it might go to spam. It is not a, it's really not a warm follow-up, which is what we plan to do.
And what I'll reiterate is that equally, we, for all the, all the vendors that applied, because we're not able to have a direct contact, it's very tough for us, because these are, again, people that we support and like and know, but we're not allowed to talk about their proposals. Like, from our end, we're not allowed to talk about it, nor are we allowed to do a direct outreach specific to the proposal until after the contracts are, are done. It's just part of the bid process. And typically, in a bid process, those agencies aren't, you know, it's, it's, it's a function of the fact that like, the way that this is being, the process that we have to follow through procurement doesn't allow for us to have that, but we absolutely want to. And like Gabriel said, both of us will be part of the follow-up, to make sure that folks kind of understand and know, and that we can work, particularly moving forward with groups that we went back and forth with a lot on eligibility, to make sure that the eligible parts of their proposal are ready to go for the, for the next opportunity.
So, when you say it's not legal, I, I need to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, so it can be perceived as a conflict of interest if myself, Gabriel, or anyone who's part of the committee-
As a bid, yes, but why, when you realize that you were going to-
Because they haven't been awarded yet, so it's still an open procurement process.
Until council approves it.
Until council approves. Because you all could, nothing's guaranteed for anyone until council approves it, and that's for any bid process. And the person who does the communicating is either the system itself, which is cold and unfortunate, and maybe we can work on telling our friends to change the language, make it a little happier. But it's also a procurement, person on the procurement team that is actually doing the back and forth, it's not us. So that, so it makes it feel less personal, which is, you know, a function of, of the, of the process.
If it was up to us, honestly, everyone would have received like a sort of personal email over Thanksgiving break.
Yeah.
You know, but we checked, and we can't, we're not allowed to.
Okay.
But we will absolutely follow up in detail with, with all the vendors.
Okay, yeah. And I guess my concern here is I know how challenging ARPA regulations are. And I know that there's, you know, when we were doing Avenues of Hope, that there were all kinds of weird, like, you know, refrigerator doesn't count, but a stove does, or, or, I, vice versa, those kind of things that were in ARPA. And I just, I worry that portions of the project, because they are going to apply, and they're gonna apply as different organizations, because they, in order to stay under the $75,000 cap, they're going to have to do that. But I'm just worried that portions of what they're doing now are not going to be ARPA-eligible.
So, one of the things that Gabriel mentioned about the reason why we haven't released the second opportunity yet, is because we want to be crystal clear about the ARPA eligibility, so that everybody knows. And then what we also are going to be able to do with the grant program, is that our technical assistance folks are also going to be able to make sure and work with the applicants, people who are applying, to absolutely, you know, ensure eligibility for anything that moves forward, so that there's not, because you're right, that's been, you know, a learning for us. Again, we don't do the ARPA-eligible part of this, because we're not the experts. But we've had to do that back and forth with a number of vendors, because we want, we wanted to make sure, and we had to make sure. And so when we got questions back, and, you know, so there's a number of vendors who went back and forth with us till the very end here, because we were doing our best to make sure that we understood exactly what we were able to move forward that would be eligible for this particular opportunity. For the next opportunity, we are working to make sure that that ARPA eligibility list is solid, so that we can work with, and have our technical assistance group work with vendors to shore up applications and make them, you know, we want them to be successful, so.
Yeah, and I think throughout this project, with both this tier, these large contracts that we're talking about today, and the smaller grants, there's been a, um, a choice, a dilemma, a spectrum, between picking from among the sort of complex array of options within the entirety of ARPA, there's a choice between picking some specific methods of establishing eligibility, and saying to people, saying to applicants, "Here, we made you a menu. And maybe you had an idea that might technically somehow be ARPA-eligible, but it's not on the menu, but we made a menu so everyone can see what's very clearly eligible." So it's sort of like, do you exclude people at the beginning, or do you open it wide open, but then it becomes a confusing puzzle, that's time-consuming to sort through. So with the small grants, especially because they're targeted at smaller, lower-capacity grassroots organizations, we're going to be very clear. And we also, you mentioned Avenues of Hope, that was, that program had a lot more time, and often applicants would come back quarterly, so they would come, and then they would, as you pointed out, find out that, you know, you could pay, you could pay for a sink, but not a fridge, or whatever it was, and then come back the next quarter, and then the next quarter. And so with this, we want to make sure that it's much simpler and more straightforward for small groups.
Yeah, and I think one other thing, because I think, as I'm reflecting on what you were saying, Councilman, is this challenge of what if there are things that are necessary that aren't ARPA-eligible? And one of the goals of the Food Justice Fund beyond this period of these grants, has been working with the Food Policy Council and other advocates on leveraging what we've created here at the city for larger investments from others that would have less strings attached, that would only augment the work. So the more that we're able to talk about what we're able to do, and the more that we can even show the demand, things like that, the more that we are able to take the $3 million that council had approved for this project, to help the Food Justice Fund in total get support from other places. And it doesn't have, you know, this should be seen as a, an opportunity for us to say, "Hey, we're standing with this concept, and we believe in it, and we want to see this kind of work happen in our communities, and we can bring more partners to that table. And if we do, then what we're gonna have is the opportunity for leveraging other funds that are not going to have to be as restrictive as ARPA can be." But ARPA is an opportunity to get, to kind of jumpstart this. So I, so I hear that, and that's definitely an ongoing conversation that we've had with like the advocacy groups, with the Food Policy Council, has been around. How, and how do we get more people to buy into this concept for the greater community? And that could be the foundation community, it could be others, you know, not, not just relying on the city, but that there are other ways that we can bring people together around this issue. And we hope that people see this as a, you know, a, an example of what that could look like, and want to come along and, you know, help this fund live on even longer.
Yeah. I, I appreciate it. I, I know I've gone on along here, but this is, is really important to me, and we had, we had, and will have a really great opportunity in my district, where I have, you know, I forget the phrase that you used, but food apartheid, a food apartheid zone, that, you know, is as glaring as can be, and someone who is excited to lead the train to, to address that. And, you know, I, we, we can't miss that opportunity. This is what ARPA was for, is to create those efficiencies that will, will solve problems that we couldn't otherwise solve. So, you know, I really, I really need to see that outcome there. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I want to say that like, we got over $7 million in requests, and there was a lot, and a lot of things were amazingly, like impactful and creative ideas that we couldn't figure out how to establish ARPA eligibility for. And so in terms of demand, and the amount of work that's going on in this city, and like the, the need for additional funding to the food sector, we, this is really, you know, it's clear there's a lot of room for more funding to go into the sector. You know, if, if ARPA eligibility and our budget weren't constraints, then, you know, most of these proposals would be amazing.
Thank you very much. Moves us on to Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wrote down a lot of notes, and I really appreciate my colleagues' questions. I think the thing that I just want to clarify that we heard now multiple times, and this is not a question, so just to move us along, so you don't feel compelled to answer, is that these ARPA guidelines were really tight. So, again, no need to expound. And that, but there's also, like, I think, Ms. McMorley just said, there's a lot of great stuff that city residents are doing. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, because, you know, a lot of us have been working on various projects in our districts over time, and I feel like there's even more excitement and momentum going on across districts, and kind of, we really, as a city council, I think have more work to do in figuring out how to grow that capacity. That, like, there's, there are problems out there that our citizens are trying to solve, and helping us solve, right? And we, it's hard for us, there's contracting rules, there are specific rules for specific pots of money, and there are, you know, our law department tells us what we can and can't do in a lot of ways, but that, you know, we, I think, just need to keep this conversation going and finding more ways to do it. I don't know what those answers are right now, right? Maybe those are just different funds, or maybe there's other kinds of programs that we can do. Certainly, Councilman Calkill and I have worked on certain kinds of programs in our own districts. And I'm grateful. And this is, that's not solace for the people who have their projects right now that weren't awarded these funds, right? And maybe portions of other projects will be ARPA-eligible for the smaller amounts. But we definitely, I just want to kind of give them words of encouragement and gratitude as well, like thank you to all of you out there, doing such phenomenal work to strengthen our neighborhoods, to strengthen our households, to strengthen our food system. And I really believe in it. I, you know, as I said, a couple of years ago, at one of these press conferences, that there are local capacities to build and local solutions to a lot of these problems, that like, the big corporate food business isn't gonna solve for us, right? And the big corporate, you know, industrial agricultural sector of the United States has weakened our local capacity in some ways, and that's a longer discussion. But, so, I, I'm definitely, of course, supportive today. I appreciate you all being here at the table and helping both the public and council understand just how difficult this is, and that, you know, I'm glad that we're doing at least this little bit with the amounts that we had today. But I, as a council member, and I think I'm hearing a lot of support here at council, that we'll keep working, so that we can do some of the more creative things. And I think, again, our citizens are coming up with creative solutions to problems, and we just haven't figured out how to help them, and we need to, we need to do that work. So that's, I'm getting, sorry, I didn't ask you a question, but I just wanted to keep it moving. I think you, Madam Chair, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilperson Warbeck.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, just sort of, yeah, so, you know, when there's over $7 million of requests, and we can't fund them all. I, I also have groups in my district that were very disappointed at not, at not being funded. I, I do want to say, just to underscore, you know, with the rules around the RFP process, council members, or any elected official, or anybody, right, at the city cannot tip the scales on the bid process. You cannot do that. It is illegal, right? So, you, I mean, it, it would be chaos if people could come and make a bid on a city, you know, on like a paving project, and then somebody would be like, "Hey, your, 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 your application was like missing this and that. Can you go back, and can you send it back to us?" That would be total, I mean, that would just be pure chaos. So that's why, I mean, just for the groups who are, like, that's why, you know, that's why the process has to be so sterile, right? But also to, to the groups who are, you know, also just coming to council and advocating for something also does not guarantee that you're gonna get funding for that thing, whatever it may be, right? Coming to council and advocating. And I think, and again, I don't want to go into the, you know, I'm not, but I think that really at the heart of it, what is so frustrating for some of these, for all of the folks who are working in this whole process, and this is long before it came to, to Director Vargas and to Gabby, right, is that these larger organizations that have the capacity to manage this city RFP process, you know, without any intervention, right, that just know how to do this kind of stuff, at least some of those organizations had committed to the smaller organizations not to apply. That, I think, is where the issue arises. And some of those organizations get money from the city already, like other money. So that, I think, is, you know, where the core of the frustration lies, I think. But there is this second phase, right? There is going to be another round with the $75,000 cap. Oh, and the other thing I want to say is that, you know, when we fund things, and I know this is hard for, but it's like, if, if, you know, if a bid comes in for a project, but it doesn't, where, it's like, you can't fund half a project, because that's something, that's just money down the dr- right? Like, you fund the thing that's going to, that's gonna get the most done with the funding that you, that you can give. So I think that's also kind of where we landed on these larger organizations, I'm assuming. But at any rate, I do hope that, you know, moving forward, you know, that, that all of this, you know, ends up being successful, and that we can find more flexible ways to continue food justice funding. ARPA is just really difficult, right? It's proven difficult. Avenues of Hope, as Councilwoman Charlin said, I have had the exact same issue, just banging your head against the wall with Avenues of Hope about, you know, sort of changing goalposts on what's allowed and what isn't. So hopefully going forward, right, that all this conversation leads to, you know, an understanding across the city that, you know, we need to be funding this, this food network work. And, you know, then, you know, hopefully we can have our, our foundations and our others, you know, we always love to, you know, say, "Hey, you know, UPMC, whatever, our nonprofits," you know, giving money that can be used in more flexible ways. So, anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? First round, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I just want to first thank you for getting this all off the ground. I know it's difficult. We sometimes put programs together without a lot of guidelines and criteria, and then afterwards, we think of things that maybe we should have included. I think maybe we should have included geographic diversity, and so that we are making sure every part of the city is covered. And so maybe going forward, we can amend it and put that in. Councilman Calkill, so we make sure, you know, your area is also represented. And I do understand that the food bank serves everyone, and I want to be honest with you, I'm glad to see the food bank get the funding, because I see what they do. I see them feeding people, and that's what I care about. I don't care about anything else. I don't, my goal is not to help somebody maintain their, you know, build their capacity, or maintain their nonprofit organization. My, my entire goal of voting for this was to make sure we were feeding people, and the food bank has proven to have done that many times over. We call them for, you know, all across the city, for times that we need help with, and they deliver. And even though they may have big funders, they don't always have the funding to do some of the things that they would like to do. So I'm glad that the food bank is getting funding. I would give them funding myself. I, you know, we try to get funding all the time from council. And a lot of the programs people see in their communities are funded by the funding the city council provides. And if people don't realize, they'll see the food banks there, but they don't realize the funding came from this council voting. the funding came from this council voting for those dollars. So I want to make sure people understand that, too. But there is a process. Everybody spoke about the process, and so I'll, again, reiterate that I'm glad that you're, you know, following the criteria and the laws, and that's what we have to do. But I do also hear Councilwoman Calkill's frustration and Councilwoman Charlin's frustration. I've felt it many times myself. But I think putting in some new criteria might be helpful and, you know, more beneficial for the city as a whole. The other thing is, I did notice that some, an organization in my district is getting the funding, and usually I'm over here screaming when they're not getting the funding, but I'm trying to understand what they're doing to get the funding. So I contacted them, I had Kim contact them yesterday. It's the Jasmine Nyree Campus in Sheridan.
Yes.
And so I love the organization, I love the people that run it. I don't know, I want a list from them with their, who they're going to feed for $160,000 a year. So, and I, it's my understanding that they're also buying some equipment for their facility. Is that correct?
We actually ended up having to exclude equipment.
You excluded it?
It was...
Because I want to be honest, I want to help people.
Around 10,000 for kitchen equipment, and we didn't want to award it, and then realized we would have to take it back, so we ended up having to exclude it.
So I want to be honest, I want to feed people, I don't want to help people remodel their businesses or their nonprofits. I want to make sure we're feeding people. If you want to get in that business of doing that kind of stuff, then they should, you know, write other types of grants, but not public dollars for that. And I don't care who, I don't care whose district it's in, including mine. But I do think that they do amazing work, and they are very capable of raising funding. But I wish we would take some of these dollars going forward, or maybe collaborate with others, and help nonprofits build their capacity so that they're not relying on public dollars all the time. One of the things that I did when all this stuff was happening, that we started some of this conversation around, was when I put in funding for community, or farms across, you know, across the city. I thought that we had farms across the city, people could grow their own, they wouldn't need rely on government and have to wait and be turned away from a food distribution because there wasn't enough food, as we saw during the pandemic. It made me sick. So, I mean, that, to me, that's one of the things I want to see us to help build the capacity, but at some point, I want us to realize, it's, we can't be there for all things to all people. And with this, we have to make sure we're using our dollars to do things. I want to keep rec centers open later. I want to have additional police officers to say, you know, to keep the streets safe. I want to cut trees, I want to pave, you know, roads. We can't continue to give grant money out like it's our money out of our own pockets that we're handing out. These are taxpayer dollars, people's public dollars, and so I wish we would have a broader conversation with our nonprofit and our, I'm sorry, philanthropic community about how they can better fund some of these programs, city and county-wide, actually, and collaborate with some of these organizations to really build a really great fund and really help build capacity and deliver results for the residents in several different ways. So I can go on and on and on about all this, but I do want to thank you for the work that you're doing. I think that we've given you a lot to do, and then we're angry as soon as you do it. So, but that's how we are. So, you know, but we have, and I do, I think Jamie Christian has come here, she's been amazing, I think we all think the world of her. And so when somebody like her who comes here all the time is overlooked, it makes me wonder what the committee's comprised of, what they're, all they were looking at. It makes me wonder a lot about what was happening, because here's somebody who really, we all know she's come down here. But coming down here doesn't mean just because you speak, you get a contract. Because I'll tell you, one of the things that makes me crazy is when people come to here, and they're saying that they're for something, and they want us to vote for this, they want us to vote for that, I'm thinking, well, how much are you getting out of this? So, you know, because I don't listen. I shut it off, because I think, you're coming here because you're going to get money or get a contract. So, you know, I appreciate that she's been here, and I appreciate when people do come here, but that doesn't necessarily equal receiving a contract. So I'm glad that we have a process in place. I think that's it for me. I just, but I think maybe we, going forward, will add some amendments to the criteria.
Thank you. And, oh, sorry, oh, yeah, with the...
I think this was started by the Women's Caucus.
The award to the food bank, all of that is going to go directly to food pantries, and we've, so we'll report quarterly. I think we might have to anonymize it to, like, census tract or zip code for public, for, like, the media, but we could tell council, at least, which pantries? And then, so at least we can have a map that shows districts and census tracts for the public. And then, a lot of Pittsburgh's award is going to go to gardens of different sizes, also distributed around the city. I don't think, it's not like I'll get to pick and choose.
I want to be honest with you, I'm not real thrilled when I heard about that, because to be honest, I can show you a lot of gardens that were planted that aren't maintained. So for me, it's also the maintenance, too. Don't just say you came in, did a garden, and then, you know, two years later, it's overgrown. So, you know, for me, I want to know how you're going to maintain, how you're going to keep track of what's happening with all that. That's what I care about, too.
I think one thing that Gabriel just referenced that we hadn't talked about is the reporting structure. So there will be quarterly reporting, and we will make sure that we will get that information to council.
I hear that, but I also have reports from the avenues of hope, and as David Giger, who's sitting in the audience, can attest to. When I went and looked, you know, one was that there's ones under contract, they're getting ready to do this work, they're going, I go to look to see what the progress is or isn't. And I pull up to one building, and there's a cease and desist order for a work order from back in May. And I said, does this look like hope to you? Because it doesn't to me or to my community. So, you know, I want us, reporting is great, I want to see the results, I want to hear from the residents that people are actually being fed.
That makes sense, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? First round? Second round? Councilman Calkill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I sound frustrated, but I first want to tell you, Director Vargas, I think you've done a fantastic job. When you were working with Councilwoman Gross and I with the city farms...
Gabriel's done better. That's just not right.
The city farms program, and, you know, all that you've dealt with over the past couple of years, I think you've done a great job. And, you know, I just want to make sure you're confident in that, that that's the way I feel about you. And Gabby, I think, again, your response to me yesterday was excellent. You know, I was frustrated when we started talking, but, you know, we got through that without bickering, and, you know, you handled yourself very well. So I really appreciate your efforts and giving me confidence in you, I will tell you. So that's how you handle adversity.
Thank you. And it's been really wonderful working with Director Vargas. I've learned a lot while doing this project, and there's a lot of new context about how all these processes work that I naively didn't understand when I started earlier this year. And so, yeah.
So the real reason why I took second round was, I wanted to address the statement I made in the first round, okay? Because a lot of my council colleagues are like, oh, you can't do, you can't do that. And I just want to address that, right? So what I said to you is, I fully expect Jamie Christian and her organization to get that funding next round. I hope you don't feel intimidated or pressured by me when I say that. It's, I fully expect it because she's most qualified, at least in my district, to receive that, I will tell you. And judging by Councilwoman Warwick's remarks, I felt, you know, whether it was directly or indirectly, notioning towards that. So you can, you can, you can address, let me finish. So I just wanted to make sure that you didn't feel intimidated in that manner, that decision's completely up to you. I do fully expect her to get it. I don't retract that statement, and I did check with our solicitor, and that statement is absolutely fine. I just want to make sure you didn't take it in a different way.
And I'll just say, absolutely did not take it that way, and there's a larger group of folks who'll be reading those, so, because we anticipate getting so many applications that we will need the help. So there'll be, it wouldn't be our decision, anyway, but I appreciate you coming back. Did not feel intimidated at all.
Appreciate that. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1268, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you to the Women's Caucus for creating the fund. Thank you.
That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 1229, Resolution Amending Resolution 341 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Granicus Inc. in a form approved by the city solicitor for website content management by increasing the approved amount by $211,613 for an amended total cost not to exceed $495,608 over three years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1229, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1230.
Bill 1230, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with EDOC Technologies LLC for the implementation of an enterprise-wide content management system to serve as a central platform for managing all digital content across city departments, cost not to exceed $3 million over one year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1230, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 1215, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to document local cooperation and the Housing Authority's agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Bedford dwellings Phase Two, which consists of Bedford phases II-A, II-B, and II-C housing development.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1215, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1231.
Bill 1231, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $750,000 for the purpose of supporting the Urban Redevelopment Authority's Homewood Avenue revitalization program.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1231...
One.
Excuse me, sorry, 1231, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1232.
Bill 1232, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the 2025 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan.
Motion to hold for a week. The Housing Opportunity Fund will be doing a presentation this afternoon during the budget briefing.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor of a one-way hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill be held for one week. Bill 1233.
Bill 1233, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Trek Development, Inc., or a related entity, for the sale of a II-B subdivided portion of Block 25 S-Lot 112, Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, 2829 Bedford Avenue, District 6, no costs to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1233, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1234.
Bill 1234, Resolution Authorizing the Adoption of the Manchester Chateau Transit Revitalization Investment District Phase One Implementation Plan and Related Agreements, Council District 6.
Motion to hold for a post-agenda?
Second.
In a public hearing.
Motion, second, discussion. All those in favor of Bill being held for a post-agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill be held. Bill 1235.
Bill 1235, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Jamal McDonald for the sale of Block 174B, Lot 202, 1349, Council District, Mount Vernon Street, no costs to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1235, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That concludes our Standing Committee's agenda. We have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold budget hearings for the Urban Redevelopment Authority, Housing Opportunity Fund, and Pittsburgh Land Bank. On Thursday, December 4th, at 10 AM, council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Public Safety Fire Bureau. Thursday, December 4th, at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Public Works. Friday, December 5th, at 10 AM, council will hold budget hearings for the Department of Parks and Recreation. And also, Friday, December 5th, at 1:30 PM, council will hold cablecast public hearing on Bill 2024-1148, relative to the naming of the gym in the Ream Rec Center to the Masolero Gym. Speaker registration will close at 12 noon, the day of the hearing. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form at the council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything for members? Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, on a lighter note, I wanted to give a shout-out to our intern, Megan Vesey. Today is her last day in our office. And shout-out to the Institute of Politics, Denny McManus, and Nello Giorgietti for setting up the program, and I hope she had a great experience these last several months, and wish her the best in the rest of her journey.